Planning Board on March 11. Open. Thank you all for coming. I hope we'll. We'll see Jeff, Lacy. Soon, but as Christine was just saying. One topic that we can talk about, even though I think Jeff. Would be a part of at least some of the. Educational or. Instructional. Steps that she mentioned. We can at least talk about how we might want to do it and when. Because I think it's a very, you raise a very important point, Christine, as we. Progress with the. With the bylaw. At some point in the hopefully not too different distant future, we're going to have a draft that we are. Hopefully pretty comfortable with. And. And one that we, even though these have been open meetings, and I think the people who've attended have learned something from them. All of us have. The attendance at these meetings has been, you know, small, and we'd like to do something that's. You know, well publicized and open to. Really encourages the whole community to. To participate. That takes some planning in terms of dates and times and. Not to mention content. One of the things that we talked about last week at this meeting was. Last Thursday was. You know. Jeff doing. Summaries and words of one syllable of. Of the natural resource protection bylaw and eventually a. The section including the cottage era state bylaw, something that. In fact, even showed us examples on the screen as I recall. And. That can be useful, obviously, in a public. Context, public meeting, large public meeting context. In fact, I think it's essential. So. My understanding is that the select board has still not settled on an annual town meeting date. We know what the traditional date of the meeting is, but. For reasons that I can't explain, I'm not suggesting anything weird, but just. I don't think that date has been announced yet, and somebody has said it could be moved into instead of in May into June. Has anybody heard? I don't see anybody from a select board on this call yet. But that's going to inform how rapidly we have to do some of this. Informational, these informational presentations, I think. How much time we have and how frequently and how many we want to do. Do you have some? Some thoughts about this, Christine, or anybody else?
Hi. Excuse me for a minute. It's Jeff. Hello? Yes. That email I sent you this morning, did you get it? If not, I will forward another one to you. It is, but let me just send you what we have. Thanks. Bye. Sorry, but I have to send Jeff. Am I still here? Um, I have to send Jeff the email to log in and then. Or if someone else has it right on the top of their computer, they could do it, but it's probably better if I do, but I'm now I.
I can do it, Christine.
Okay, that would be good. Just, he just needs the login. I sent it to him this morning, but.
Yeah, I'll do it right.
So I have some thoughts. About education, but. I really think it should be a community-driven process and not particularly just my viewpoint. I think that. Well, what I did is when Carol Owens had the publication a month ago. When there were some issues raised about our bylaw that. Showed there was some misunderstandings about what we were thinking about. I wrote a response to Carol and then I shared it with Jeff. And he edited my language, which was great, and we submitted it to Carol for publication. But it was over. The 400-word limit she has, so she wouldn't publish it. So I've sent her a letter from me. Saying that if people want to read. What Jeff wrote, that they can email me. But what I was hoping is that the town would establish a webpage. So that people don't have to go onto the town website, then find the planning board website. And then find where some of this information is on the planning board website. So I think it would be very helpful to begin with if we had a web. A folder on the town website that people can easily find. That would have information that is cleared either by Teresa or Michael. To address. What the concerns are that we're hearing in the town. So this would probably be a lot of information that has been developed by Randall. Joel or Jeff, but there could be other pieces that would be important for the town residents to hear. I contacted Teresa and asked her about doing it, and she said we would have to speak with Mike Canales. So that's as far as I went with it because I don't have any authority to do really much more than I think I've done. But I would like to hear opinions about doing that. And being able to provide background and information because there is a lot. Huge amounts of misinformation because people cannot attend these meetings. And they really are not paying a whole lot of attention, so there's a ground swell of. Talk, 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 and sometimes that's not the healthiest way of getting facts out there. So I'd be interested to hear what people have to say.
Would there have to be some way to? Someone to put the information on this website, like just planning board stuff? Or would this be something others could write into in which you then once again get misinformation, maybe?
Right. I was thinking that this would be a folder where you clicked on the folder. And that it would be information that was by the professionals, more or less, I mean. So that we don't just have more misinformation. I think if people have questions. They certainly could send them to the planning board at our town email address, and we could. Answer them on the website because if one person has a question, it's what, 25 others have the same question? And I think that might be beneficial.
Or they can come to one of our Zoom meetings and ask the question.
They can. But sometimes they don't want to, or they don't want to be identified or what have you.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So I thought that if we could have a way of, you know, just really getting the word out that. This is an entirely new concept in how. We are going to look at subdivision of land, and so let's think, you know, let's. Be informed. So when it comes time to move forward, people. Have a better idea of what we're talking about. And I see Jeff is on, so probably I should be quiet.
Well, Christine, I think it's a very good point, and I like the idea, but I also think apart from kind of making. Information, good information available on the town website in a special folder. I think we still need to think about a, at least one, if not more. Well-publicized meetings to of the planning board, official meetings of the planning board that. Maybe at a different time from our normal meeting times and days. That are devoted exclusively to explaining and the bylaw and. Answering questions about it. And I think necessarily that would have to involve. Jeff, as well as obviously all of us on the planning board and all of the. Hopefully, large number of town residents who would. Having been, if the, if the meeting is well enough, publicized would, you know, we'd have a much larger meeting than, for example, we're having right now. I think I see. Three. Three or four people today on this call who are not members of the planning board. I'm glad they're calling in and it's great, but obviously that's not going to do the job. We need many, many times this number. In what seems to me a part or. An adjunct to your idea of an information source constantly added to and updated. But also this either one or two meetings, I'm thinking where, you know, we will. Publicize them well in advance and make it clear what we're going to talk about. And Jeff would be part of it.
I think that I sent Jeff a thought on that process that would involve. Using a tent, we can use the tent at the congregational church once it's put up, and that's a pretty central location, and a lot of people can walk there. And bring people together and have it. Interactive the way Randall does his presentation with M and Ms. And we could give people some kind of candies and have them do the layout. Of what the different densities would look like on a map, so they get to be comfortable. Or not, but at least they would know what the density are looking like and how much green space there would be. Based on these different densities, but that would almost be something that you would want to have people do in. More than just a single person. So where's. There's some thought that that might be something that we could use the tent at the church once it's warmer and. Have an interactive meeting and really get to talk with people about this, but. That's another thought, something that may or may not be useful, but I think those people who participated in. Randall's exercise found it extremely helpful.
Indeed. Yeah, no, that's, that's an idea too. Well, as you say, I see that Jeff has joined us. Welcome, Jeff. Glad to see you again. I think you're muted. There you go.
You guys are very dedicated. When it's 61 degrees out there and the sun is shining.
We had a feeling you might have been outside. And that may be where some of the members of the planning board are too. We do have a quorum, so we have a real meeting. I think the. The principal agenda item, the only real agenda item for this meeting is further discussion. Of ideas and principles. And details of the draft bylaw, as I mentioned before you came on, Jeff. I, I think. Were hoping to see a. A redraft for, for Stockbridge's purposes of those summary documents you had done for another one of your clients. Describing the natural resource protection zoning. Bylaw for them, and we saw you also had an ADU. A summary of an ADU bylaw, which I thought wouldn't hurt for us to look at. Not now, clearly, that's not on the agenda for. For today, we're really focusing on. Your zoning bylaw. So. How, how would you like to? Address. The group tonight or this afternoon, Jeff, we're here until hopefully a firm stop at six o'clock. If not earlier, but we don't want to go beyond six. So the floor is yours unless you have questions of us.
Oh, I've got lots of questions of y'all. In, in, in time. Let's see. During what, what time I had for this project in the last week, I have. I have. Reorganized and kind of finalized the NHRPZ part of it. You know, the first part that we've been going over. I made some changes to that. I did get some suggestions from Randall, which I've incorporated. He and I are still talking about. Different ways to bring some of his ideas, some of his OSRD kind of ideas into it. Because it is more of an NRPPZ type bylaw. So he, he, he and I are looking for ways to bring some of his ideas in. And we were, we were discussing that this morning. So still working on that, although that's. That's in pretty good shape. I can, I can quickly run down that if you, if you want, but. Maybe do that if we have time, because I think that the CE stuff may be more important.
Okay. That's fine. I think the draft, what you labeled as draft number three of the. The main bylaw was distributed this afternoon, so not many people, including me. Were able to go through it in detail, and I still have a problem. Maybe I'm the only one. When I open it up, I cannot see any of your comments or. It's the strangest thing, but it's. I'm going to have to get it from another source because it's really annoying, but that's, that's my problem, not yours.
Some people can.
Yeah, apparently. Well, maybe I'm the only one. Maybe I've got a faulty. Yeah, it looks like that. I know it. That's the way it's supposed to look, and all I get is the main body. With none, none of the side comments. From, from Jeff, which are so illuminating and necessary. But if you want to talk about the cottage era state section of the bylaw, please. Let's go ahead.
Okay. You can see at the bottom of the NHRPZ bylaw, I've put a new section H. And that, that would be the cottage era portion as a special permit option under the overall NHRPZ bylaw. So that's a placeholder for that at the end. I, I have done a couple of things. I've gone through Joel's work and. A number of times and become fairly familiar with it. And, you know, have some questions about it. You know, I know this may be opening a can of worms, but. You know, mostly my questions are, what are the parts that? That. That give people problems in that because if, if, if that document was fine, you probably wouldn't be needing me right now. So. What from there is problematic? I've also gone through your existing cottage era bylaw, which is much shorter and simpler, I think. And I've critiqued that. I have, I don't know, eight or 10 comments about that existing bylaw. And maybe my overwhelming, overwhelming overarching question is. Would you like me to use Joel's? Version as, as a starting place, as a template? Go from there, or would you like to start with what you have on the books and build up from that? It's probably either take Joel's and build it down, or take what you've got and build it up a little bit. And then, and then my last question is, you know, we're all familiar with the DeSisto project, you folks more than I. I have this little six-page flyer that describes it, so I pretty much know what that involves and. You know, to open a can of worms again. What do you guys think of this proposal? I mean, is this the kind of, of, of thing that you want the bylaw to? Make possible? Or is this too much and you want it cut back? You know, I understand there's camps in town, but the planning board, the planning board kind of needs to give me some guidance. On where you want this to end up and, you know, maybe the DeSisto project is, is, is a good one to, to pick apart. Because conceivably, I could, I could design a bylaw that could enable the DeSisto proposal or enable a reduced version of it. Along with a bunch of open space that would be preserved. But I just need policy guidance is what I need from you folks.
Well, I think that the folks that I hear from that. Many of, not all of them, but they, they wanted to see the DeSisto project. Looked at more thoroughly. They felt like it did not even get a chance to. Be proposed or discussed or negotiated in any way. And as I listen to people. The, the biggest gripe I hear. By folks is that, oh, just too big, just too big. But generally speaking, many people like the idea of it and like that there's density there, but. Also. Preserving much of the open space that's there. It is, it is. You look at that project, it looks very much like what you're proposing as far as putting the houses in places that. Are not the essential and best land and stays away from wetlands. And yes, there's a large number there of condominiums and houses. But generally speaking, people like the idea of that project. Now, I know there's plenty in. Out there that don't. I get that, but there's also a large number that do like the idea. So I would ask that something be proposed or fashioned to allow something along those lines now. All of it, maybe not, but a good portion of it, yes.
I guess that begs the question, Wayne, because I agree with you in principle. How does, how do we answer Jeff's question? Do we? Do we? Work on what we've got in the existing bylaw, in our existing bylaws about the cottage era state section? Or do we? And build up, as he put it, or do we take Joel's work and? And edit it?
Well, as I look at Joel's work, it's very restrictive to numbers. I mean, he never gets to, you know. Anywhere near the density that that project proposes. Now, if that can be manipulated to reflect, you know. The want or need of more density or more allowable units, I guess if that's. A piece of work that's most of the way done. Except for plugging in maybe different numbers. And I would have to leave that up to Jeff to answer that. I don't know if ours is better to work with on that vein or if Joel's is.
Were you with us last week, Wayne, when? When Jeff walked us through his analysis of the DeSisto property. Using natural resource protection zoning methodology, which.
I'm sorry, I, I was, I don't think I was at the very last meeting this forum. I. Did hear, I mean, what the long and short of it was that 38 units would be allowed on that 320-acre property. That's without. You know, any of the contingencies and what have you. That's the last one I was at, but.
Right, right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you knew about that for what that's worth because it's a, it's. Actually looking at that property completely differently from the way the developer. Was planning it. It wasn't just a residential. Development it had.
And I do think that's the difference. I think that wants, if that, what we're thinking of is a, are those properties that could be developed that way? Then I think density is necessary. I mean, I like the way that it puts those houses. In clusters. I do. I, I like the, I like the concept of preserving the open land, but I want the density. That allows that place to be more in line with what he's, what, what. The system was proposing. I don't, I don't think we should model it, model the cottage era state bylaw after what we're trying to do here with open space residential. I think it. At least on its face, that proposal does that. As you look at it, it does primarily what I think Jeff proposes in many ways. So. I'll let Jeff speak to that, I guess.
Is it possible to do this with? Neutral density as to if it were just developed? Could we, could we do a neutral density thing, not cutting back and not adding on? And still have different kinds of housing and different kinds of living, but keep it what it would be? If it were two and four acre lots and keep the density the same? Only keep it, you know, conserve, conserve the land, you know, make a little more than Jeff. Had with the 38, but not as much as the Sisto had with theirs and just keep it a density neutral thing, and then it would just be preserving. The land we want, the same amount of people you would have if you had a subdivision. And put all the houses where they're in the best position. I don't know, just a thought and make the density the same, not make it too dense, not make it. So that it's, you know, like 38, like a little more than that. Or there's, sorry, Jeff.
I did a conventional calculation on. On the system using some of the same assumptions I used for the. The calculation of 38, and I think I got 54 for the, the conventional, you know, some kind of reasonable subdivision proposal. Using. Two acre lots up front and four acre lots in the back.
No lots in the back. Yeah.
Nancy?
I think people have a problem with when we're looking at your calculations to save 80% is open space of like. It just seems without knowing how much is wetlands and how much is slope. For people to grasp that idea with DeSisto that they have over 300 acres. But then 80% of it can't be touched ever again. I think there's a lot of back talk about that.
So, yeah. Well, there'd be, there'd be two different percentages with the system. There'd be a 60% up front for, for part of it, and then there would be. 80% for the remaining land in the back. So. I, I think that that left about 76 acres. For, for development to go on.
Oh, okay.
And 244, 244 altogether with combining the 60 and the 80, 244 for open space and 76. Hope that adds up to 320. That's my, that's my recollection. So, but quite a bit of land. And the lots in there would be, I believe, between 1.3 and 1.7 acres in size. So. The, the smallest lot would be bigger than a football field. So, I mean, still size of a lot.
What if we had smaller lots?
Huh?
What if you had smaller lots? I mean, you don't necessarily need an acre and a half. I mean, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, well. It's all in what you want. I mean, you had, you're kind of a large lot town. I mean, you had, you're kind of a large lot town. You've got two and four acre zoning, you know, those are big lots. And the subdivision on Meadow Lane right next has huge lots. And you are limited if you don't have town water and sewer. You're, you, you have to get a, a septic system and a, and a well on each lot. So you need, you, you need an acre for four bedrooms is, is the rule of thumb. So I always try to get these so that they're an acre or larger in lot sizes. You know, for a four-bedroom house with a good amount of space around it and the ability to put a well and a septic on each one of them.
Yeah, I think that De Sisto is, has a connection that they paid for, I heard. To bring the sewer onto their property when it was a school. So I don't know about water, but I do know that they do have access to a sewer. And I just want to say, if any of the audience have questions, they should put them in the chat and we will get to them.
So, so anyway, Nancy, the, in, in answer to your question about the eighty percent. As, 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 as long as you don't change the, the, the density divisor and you're not looking to change the number of units. You, you, you can do this with it, with sixty and eighty percent. And, and you'll still have commodious sized lots, you know, of, over an acre in size. And, and you'll just, you'll just save more open space. If you reduce the eighty percent, if you just do that, you'll have less open space preserved. And those houses will just go on bigger lots.
Oh, okay.
Increase the density by, I mean, I think the numbers need to go up.
Yeah, it, it, it's kind of a balancing, balancing act. If, if, if you want more units. Especially if there's no water and sewer. If there's water and sewer, then it's a little different calculation. But usually the more units, as the units go up, the open space that you're able to preserve goes down by percentage. They're, they're related.
Right, so the less open space you preserve, the more units you can have.
Right.
And what about changing the actual density calculation for? Well, you, you're familiar with it. I mean, there was a hundred and seventy-three units, including condos and, and single-family homes there. Including a hotel. So how do you get closer to those numbers? And, I mean, as I see it, when you look at that plan, there's an awful lot of open space even still with what was there.
Okay, now you have to, so. There's, with, with saving a, a property like, like the De Sisto house and, and those grounds. There's, there's a public purpose that the town has. And perhaps allowing more density, allowing a variety of uses, different things that might ordinarily not be allowed. In order to essentially fund the preservation of that estate, which is in the town's interest. So you're, you're extending carrots to the developer and, you know, you, you want to preserve that, that property. And you, you need to give them enough to, to where it's profitable to do that. Whereas in a residential subdivision. I, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I, I don't see the public purpose there for the town of Stockbridge. I think the preservation of open space is probably the public purpose that you would have for doing the NHRPZ. So maybe the calculation for a residential subdivision of single-family dwellings needs to be different. Than the numbers that you might use for a cottage era redevelopment.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. I would like them to be separate because I don't think they necessarily address the same issues.
I agree.
Particularly because the, the Sisto, not, not to keep harping on that, but it is a live or semi-live. Example does have or did have, you know, components that are not, you know, traditional residential. There were condos, there was a, you know, they were going to turn the main house. This is answered to one of the questions we've gotten on the chat into a hotel and restaurant. Hotel rooms and restaurant after it was refurbished. Obviously, you know, addressing a project like that with those components, you know, swimming pool. Gardening space, I think that was part of the original plan was, you know, community gardens. Is a different use in, in broad terms than a traditional residential. Development, it's, it's more commercial. Has more commercial activity on it. And I think we would expect that that's a possibility, not just at De Sisto, but. But elsewhere at, at, at other large properties, unless we disallow it in, in, in a new bylaw. And, and because it is so different, it, it would, it, it does, to your point, Wayne. You know, pretty much demand a different approach from the natural resource protection bylaw that we've been working on these last few months. Which is wholly single-family residential, at least in principle. Am I right, Jeff?
Yeah. I mean, for, for the most part, the, 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 the NHRPZ. Is, is what's going to produce the open space for the town. And the, the right open space and allocate the best land for development and, and what should be conserved. But then within the development envelope that you have. That's going to be the subject of, of this CEE bylaw, everything that's going on in there. And, you know, that's going to be its own special permit. So really, all you, all you're using is the open space part in, in the beginning, just to get the open space taken care of. But instead of single-family dwellings, you're going to have a much more complicated site plan with different uses. Higher densities perhaps that are hooked into sewer. So, you, you know, it's, and that's where the review is going to go off in a whole nother direction than for a residential subdivision. So, yeah, all right, so, so I, I've, I've, I've heard you, I've, I've heard you clearly that, that, that we need some separate. Separate density calculations for the, for the thing. Now, on, on, on the De Sisto proposal, I think I've said it before, I, I kind of like the front part of it. Pretty good, I like that design, it's compact. It, it keeps, it keeps the view from the road nicely, which is good. It's not going to be a, a, a lot of perceptible change from the road. But what it does is it, 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 it gets across those wetlands. And, and there's a substantial wetland that, that has width to it, not like just putting in a culvert and, and hopping over the wetland. You know, this, this wetland is, is hundreds and hundreds of feet wide. So that would have to be filled. And there'd be a lot of permitting that goes with that. So that's an expense to, to bridge that gap, to get into that next developable area at the rear. So if, if they're going to do that, then they've got to build enough houses to sell to make it worthwhile to get across that wetland. What you're feeling on those houses back there, I think there's something like thirty-four of them. They look like single-family dwellings. And then there's some open space and there's some other facilities that, I don't know, might be a pool or a clubhouse or something back there.
With the exception of the road that goes through, it's all preserved that wetland in those woods.
Yes, that probably would be part of the open space. But all, all I'm saying is that, that the front part of the De Sisto property is fairly limited in size. And, and, and they, they use it all up pretty efficiently. But then I, I, I guess to make the project go, they have to punch across that wetland, which is going to be expensive. You know, there's a lot of permitting, a lot of engineering, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be an involved process. So. From, from, from my perspective, that second part of the De Sisto project. Is, is, is a little more, is a little more problematic than, than the front part. But I'm just wondering what people think about that, that, the front and the rear of that.
I would like to see everything in the front and nothing across the wetland, if they could do it and still make it. I, I feel that's, you know, use more of the front part on this, on the roadside of the wetland. And try not to go across it if they can still do that. That would be my input.
And yet still preserve that open space between the, the house and the road?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's as important as preserving the back, but, but that's, you know, that's just. And I don't know how much space there is going down the hill from where they had all the stuff on the top to the wetland, you know, on that bank. Just not crossing the wetland, crossing the wetland seems really problematic and then putting houses on that hillside. That, that to me was, was a tough thing.
But they're not putting houses on the, on the hillside. The, the housing is on the flat.
Okay.
And the, the hillside is preserved, all of it.
Yeah, the hillside rises up in, in, in the rear of that.
I still don't like that.
Yeah. Okay, a, any other reactions to that, to that project?
We have a question, Jeff, just to help people who haven't been on previous meetings, I think. In addition to four-bedroom homes on an acre, could there be condos for people who want to downsize? And then perhaps opening up existing homes for a younger family? And that statement is really a lot of the conversation in town right now. Is to look at some of these proposals and try to think about. Is there a way to have a development that is environmentally friendly? But perhaps could offer some solutions to the problem we have with particularly the elderly and young families. Not really wanting an acre of land or more. Being more comfortable with a smaller lot or a condo. So how do you answer that question? And I expanded on it a little bit, but that's my prerogative, I guess, today. So if you could answer that, that would be helpful.
It's, it's pretty easy to write it in, so that's possible. But then you have to consider the economics from the developer's perspective. You know, if, if this is not subsidized. You know, it's, it's like the car companies, they'd rather sell you a luxury car or an SUV or a, a great big truck. Than they would a, a Geo or a Prius, because they just make more. You know, the, the high-end housing is more profitable and that's where they gravitate to. If they could do it, especially in, you know, a nice town like Stockbridge. So I don't think you're going to get that kind of affordable housing with, with one of these proposals. I think these are going to be geared towards high-end. With the right kind of developer, working with the NHRPZ bylaw. Especially if, if you had a lot of, a lot of housing options. And, and they were of the right mind, see, that's the key, if they were of the right mind. It, it could be designed so that you could create all kinds of housing. In, in, in Chootsbury, you can do single-family dwellings, duplexes, three-family or four-family in an, in RPZ. And for the single-family dwellings, you can have accessory apartments attached or detached. So there's, we provided lots of housing options. You can't exceed the overall cap, but the way you distribute the cap between the different kinds of units is, is really up to the developer. But again, the, the economics have to be there. If you want them to do it voluntarily.
Have you ever had any projects where people worked with mass housing or one of those groups? To secure funding to help with the cost of building housing that is not high-end?
Those in Massachusetts often occurs what's called friendly forty Bs. Do y'all know what forty B is?
Fortunately.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a state law that allows developers to override local zoning and some other controls. In order to build housing, some portion of housing that's deemed affordable. And that goes into what's called a comprehensive permit. And some towns, because of all the flexibility in those forty Bs. Will do a cooperative, what's called a friendly forty B. So the town is actually working with the developer and almost like a co-sponsor of the project. So that's a good way to, I think you get twenty, twenty-five percent affordable housing out of those projects. But anyway. On, on, let, let me just ask a couple of questions. So in, in, in Joel's version, there, there is an elaborate pre-application process. That, 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 that he runs, it, it's, it's at least two plans are submitted. I think in the beginning, it's a sketch plan and then it goes to a concept plan. And it's iterative with the planning board. And this is all, this is all before a special permit gets filed. And I, I checked with my colleagues across the state and yeah, some towns do do that. You, you can, you can put something like that up in front of a special permit. You can't put it up in front of the subdivision, but you can a special permit. But, I mean, this is almost like its own regulatory process. Because the planning board holds the concept plan back until it feels. It, it can be turned into a special permit application. So that could be, that could be months and months and months. And there's sort of a, a public process that goes along, along with it. You know, information meetings, not a formal public hearing. But it's, it's long and elaborate. And I'm just wondering how you feel about having that kind of a process. For, for this, because it's, it's over a page in Joel's bylaw, it's a page, page and a half of description.
Yeah.
Goes.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on that, the pre-application process?
I think we got hung up when we were reviewing Joel's original proposal by that pre-application process. And thinking that we liked the state model bylaw at that point, which had a much simpler process. And we couldn't figure out how to make them blend together, if I recall correctly. And so we spent a lot of time going back and forth and didn't get very far. So this is going to be a challenge for you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I recall that we felt that was kind of cumbersome, just a lot of, you know, like who's really going to go through this? I think that's where we began to get hung up on that.
Not to mention cumbersome and lengthy.
Yeah.
A long, the, the process could stretch out for quite a long period, longer than normal. And maybe longer than even necessary.
Well, would your direction to me be to shorten that a bit?
I always go with shorter than longer, as long as we're not leaving out something essential. That's easy to say, harder to do, but I agree with Marie that my recollection is we never really got comfortable with that part of Joel's draft bylaw.
Okay.
With a concept plan, if a concept plan is submitted and discussed ahead of a formal application, isn't that, is that what we're talking about with this?
Yeah.
So then after the concept plan is discussed and we can make recommendations and the other town boards have had input, how would then the formal application proceed? I mean, because if there's another whole process after that, I guess I would ask for your explanation on that.
Well, let's see. The, according to what Joel, Joel has his pre-app, all right. So the pre-application process, pre-application meeting and preliminary site analysis. This is prior to submitting an application. Meet informally with the planning board, discuss the process, blah, 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 and submit a sketch plan, which has a lot of information on it. Soils, wetlands, topography, wetlands, ecologically sensitive areas, view sheds, all kinds of information. And then, then there's a consultation with neighborhood in town. Planning board will hold one or more informal meetings with neighbors. Doesn't really say what neighbors are, but there's some people. And review of site analysis. So you're reviewing that. Then after the consultation meetings, applicant shall prepare a concept plan, preliminary concept plan. Then the planning board makes a concept plan determination. Let's see. And, let's see. Hold on. And I believe that's where it says that the planning board shall either invite the applicant to submit a formal application based on the concept plan or indicate to the applicant changes to the concept plan that should be made prior to applying for a special permit. So this could go on. This is the iterations that could, you know, keep coming back and then and they want to change that, so they come back and then. So the planning board, it acts like almost a gatekeeper on the ability to apply. You have to get through this first. And said, until the planning board determines that the concept plan is acceptable and ready for submission for a formal application for a special permit. So yeah, it's kind of an amorphous process you've got here. So there's nothing in state statute about it. It's, it looks like a home rule kind of concoction. And it could go on for a long time. So to answer your question, Wayne, then after the planning board says, okay, submit a special permit based on this concept plan, then you submit a special permit application and a formal plan.
And I think the whole point, if I can defend Jeff's approach, I mean Joel's approach, was that this lengthy, albeit lengthy and complicated process would take time and energy. The end result would be something that by the time it got to the special permit process would more or less sail through because of all the preliminary work, the clear understanding about open space and the importance, parts of the property that are preserved and all that stuff. I mean, I think that's the point of these preliminary meetings is to produce a special permit application that the planning board would more or less rubber stamp at that point because all that preliminary work would have been done.
Reality though is we've been working for a year on a bylaw, simple parking amendment and sign amendment. And it looks like after all that time, we sent it to the Board of Selectmen for them to refer it back to us. And now there is a member of the select board who is saying, well, maybe we could, what are our options? Can we develop a bylaw and send it in tonight to refer that to the planning board and have them consider our bylaw? So I'm very concerned about thinking that the end of a very long process is going to result in something that will just move into the definitive high-end stage and be approved because I think that there are options to delay and without real specific guidelines as to you can approve this or you cannot approve that. I think we are potentially going to be spending a tremendous amount of time on something that may never go any further than the planning board. And I think it might be helpful, Jeff, if you talk about what Randall's citing principles are compared to what Joel's citing principles are, if you can bring those out off the top of your head.
Oh, well, hmm. The citing principles that we use in addition to a conservation analysis and findings process, which I believe I've sent you folks, which goes along with an NHRPZ, there are also some rural citing principles, which I think we reviewed last time.
Yes.
And they're just general, general principles of how to integrate development into a rural landscape without completely botching it up. So I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if Randall, I mean Randall has what's called a four-step method. And he and I were talking today about trying to integrate some of that into the NHRPZ section. And if I can remember the four steps, the first one is to identify, to identify.
The open space and then the housing, correct?
The primary and secondary resource areas. And then in accordance with that, locate houses in areas that are not sensitive environmental resource areas to find house sites. Then to locate the roadways, the access ways to serve those houses. And then finally to draw lot lines, leave the lot lines until last. So that's, Randall and I are talking about how to, how to perhaps incorporate some of that into what we're doing. And of course, that varies with every piece of property. Randall and I used to work on these things all the time. And you really don't know what you're going to do until you see the property and you see where the resources are and where the developable land is. And if you've got to have septic systems and wells, that's a whole different matter. And then, then you have, you know, the view from the existing road to consider. You have the amount of new roadway you're going to have to put in. You know, the more you put in, the more expensive the whole project is going to be. So and then, and then to actually locate houses, that's, that's the hardest part to me is and in some subdivisions, in some subdivisions, they don't even want you to locate the houses. They leave that to the homeowner to, you know, locate and orient the homes. But so that part was always a little dicey to me is actually locating houses. But every site is, every site's going to be different. And Randall's ideas about his four-step method and the conservation analysis that Joel and I use are really similar. It's, it's just a way to learn about the site, identify where the conservation priority resources are, where the developable land is and separate those two so that the development can go on the developable area. NRPPZ sort of stopped short of locating houses and and all the roads necessarily. I mean, that's, that's something that's kind of left up to the developer. But I mean, Randall really goes into the weeds and designed a whole neighborhood in his process. So but the most important thing is getting the conservation land right and finding an area that can be developed economically and aesthetically.
Has any of this discussion helped you, Jeff, with respect to using Joel's preliminaries or not?
Yeah, I do have some specific questions. I'm not looking at you guys. I'm looking at a marked up version of Joel's bylaw here that is kind of just a big mess that I created, but it has some questions in it. Can I just shoot a couple of questions to you guys?
Sure.
There's, there's a limit on rendering impervious more than either 1.5 or 15% of the buildable acreage. What was the intent? Was it 1.5 or was it 15%? You remember? Or is that, it looks like a typo, like?
It must be a typo. It must be a typo and it's probably 15% I would think.
That's my thinking, 15%. Okay, so he stuck that in there. That's, that's actually pretty reasonable. No new structure shall be taller than 35 feet. 35 feet is the, no new structures. So some of the old structures could be higher than 35 feet. 35 feet is often a, a limit for single-family dwellings, things like that. Do you want to go any taller in these types of projects or how do you feel about that?
I think some of the height has to do with our fire protection. I don't know if somebody here knows more than I do, but I think the size trucks we have limits a certain amount of how high we can build.
Okay.
I think, yeah, that, maybe somebody knows better than I know about this. I don't know if Nancy.
I mean, 35 feet is high enough for a good two-story house, right?
Well.
Right.
I just asked Peter on the fire department.
Yeah.
And he said that, no, it's not a fire department issue. It's just something that had gone back years and years and years ago that that's how people wanted it to be. And it's continued on through.
Okay.
Yeah, and for most, and for most houses, single-family dwellings, that's fine. You can do a nice pitched roof and have two full stories with even a 12, you know, even a steep pitch and it looks good. But to get, say, three stories in a condominium or some kind of townhouse thing that you want to be developed fairly compactly, say, in this DeSisto proposal behind the main estate, is that something where you want to consider a higher?
Do we know how high the buildings are, the condos are over at White Pines? Does anybody know?
No idea.
Peter, do you know? Oh, Peter thinks they're less than 35 feet.
I mean, it's.
And I think also that the proposed, I think the proposed buildings at DeSisto stayed under 35 feet.
I think monkeying with that 35-foot limit is just asking for trouble.
Okay. Don't have to go there.
Yeah, I think, I think we should leave it at 35 without enough controversy without trying to raise it to 40 or 45 to allow some people to put three-story buildings up.
Okay. So another question, I've seen in your existing CEE bylaw, it says parcel minimums of 80 acres and Joel's 50 acres. And in the NHRPZ, I use 20 acres. Thinking about the types of property that would be likely to come in under this is is, are there properties under 50 acres that qualify for this? 50 is a lot of acres.
Yeah, we never quite resolved this. Still haven't. Does anybody have a?
We have 16 parcels in the town that are between 40 and 60, seven parcels that are between 60 and 80 and 14 parcels that are over 80 acres. And I've looked at the map, but I'm really not for sure which, how many of those would be considered important for this bylaw to address at this point? So I think we need to do further research before we can address that. But just one point I want to make on the height issue. We had talked previously, if you are going to extend a existing historic structure, we might allow as an option the extension to be the same height as the original structure.
I remember that too, Christine.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm so COVID-dead. It's amazing I remember anything. So, but that may be something that would be an option in a bylaw because it could increase density without having a huge impact because the higher you go, the less open space you use.
Yeah.
Right.
You could, you could say everything, everything built new has to be either no higher or subordinate to the principal cottage. Something like that. But.
That's reasonable.
That's, that's another way of saying it, yeah.
Right, right. So you don't want anything to outshine the, the whole purpose of what you're doing.
Right.
The main cottage, okay. All right, here's another one. This is from Joel's. Is there a buffer area 100 to 200 feet wide depending on geography between off-premises neighbors and any on-premises activity areas? That would be intrusive to such neighbors. Boy, that, that's, what does that mean? Does, does that mean that if there is, what's a neighbor? Is it a house? Is it their lot line? And then it says, activity areas that would be intrusive to such neighbors. So there's something you can argue about. Is it intrusive or not? So what you're thinking on this? I mean, in its simplest terms, the way this might make sense is is to say 100 feet or something, 200 feet or whatever, between, between an existing dwelling and certain areas on the, on the CEE site, dwellings on the CEE site, roadways on the CEA site, parking on the CEE site, something that, that could be intrusive, but not lawn, not gardens, not, you know, open. Uh, you know, open space or trails or anything like that.
I I think that that would be part of what we would do as a planning board. As we review a a project like that, if. There's something close, right on the edge that will be affected, maybe you consider that. But with the open space considerations that are already there. I think you accommodate that. A a hundred-foot or two-hundred-foot buffer, I think is. An awful lot. And I think that'd be something where if we can talk about the sighting. As we're going to, then that would be another consideration to discuss as a board.
So wh- what you could do is you could write it in as as yeah, the the the. The special permit could require a a buffer area deeper than the normal. Buffers on lots. Between existing off premises um dwellings and on premises activity areas. If. If something or other. So you you leave it open. You don't, you don't say it's going to be a hundred to two hundred feet. You just leave it open and use it if you need it.
Site-specific, I think, you know?
Ad hoc, site-specific.
Good idea.
Yeah, I like that, too.
So I'll convert it to that. All right, um. I'm just scrolling down here looking at my comments. Um. Okay. The 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 last thing here that he had, which looked like. Was starting, it was the Great Estate Inn. Whatever that is and um. Um and I I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that section is really completed. Or was just sort of started um.
It was not completed.
Okay.
He was, he was raising it as a topic for us to to discuss further. It was never resolved. My my understanding, my recollection of Great Estate Inn was a. You know, a a uh. Small. Uh. Hotel. In effect, um something akin to what. Uh thirty-seven Interlake and DeSisto wanted to do with the main house.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Leaving aside all the other stuff that DeSisto wanted to do. Uh, I think that's what he, what he was trying to describe, wanting to know if we wanted to allow that. In and and be be specific about allowing it. I think. Do anybody have another memory of that?
Well, I I just think that becomes redundant. If we account for the hotel space and. Rooms, uh, I don't think a great estate. Uh, section really applies. I mean. I I think it's uh, it's already accounted for with. What we have in six point six. It just. I don't know. I guess look at it, but it seems like another piece that might not be necessary.
I also wondered, I I tend to agree with you, Wayne, but I wondered whether Joel was using a kind of term of art. Are you? Are you familiar with the term Great Estate Inn?
No.
I I was asking that of Jeff.
I I I'm not, no, no, um. I mean, it's 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 going to be nothing more than one of your cottages. Um and.
Yeah.
And 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 you're saying in, you already provide for hotel. So I'm I'm not sure how it would be different. I mean, he seems to have some. Exact criteria that constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. On at least twenty acres of land. Well, was that then or does it have to have twenty acres now? Um and connected to town sewer. That's reasonable, I guess. Um. I don't know. Let let me give, let me give this some thought and um. Um. I'm I'm getting together with Joel on other things. I I'll 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 pick his brain again. He's been very generous with me. Of picking through this stuff. So I'll I'll ask him what he had in mind. But one observation I have is that. And 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 I'm I'm looking at at both Joel's by law and your existing by law. There. Um. There there are a lot of 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 picky, picky details in here. Um, you know, like you have to have eighty acres. Um. There there's this whole section six point six dash four B in your existing and. Kind of like, what is the purpose of all that? Uh, there are other ones that could be very limiting. What what I'm trying to say is that if it's a special permit and you have discretion. It's often better to have goals and objectives. But not a ton of numerical specifics. Because as soon as you get. As soon as you you get all those specifics, you know, you're. The the exceptions are just going to come out of the woodwork and invite amendments to change the thing. Um, and in a bylaw like this, the only way you can, you can get around these specifics, if you put them in there. Is to seek a zoning variance, which you, from your ZBA, which you probably won't get because the standards are. Very difficult in Massachusetts, or go back to town meeting and try to amend the bylaw, which I understand it hasn't. What I like to do, and I've done it in solar bylaws and I've done it in all of my um NRPPZ bylaws. Is uh is is put in a an internal waiver. And I often make them very broad. And it it just says for cause. And if if uh if certain criteria are met, the planning board um uh through a special permit can waive or reduce. Any requirement of the bylaw. So if you have a really good proposal and it just happens to run afoul of one of the numeric standards in there. Um, but the whole project is really good and and. Doesn't make sense to enforce the standard. Then you have the ability to waive it or reduce.
I like that idea. It gives you some flexibility and it lets you, lets you look at a project. Independently, maybe of the rigid standards. I I like the thought of that.
Yep, and and what it does is, you know, then you can have, you you know, then you can go ahead and put some numeric. Um specifics in there and you can make your bylaw fairly strict so that. If 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 you need to enforce that, you can, you can deny waivers and enforce it. Or you can, i- if the the project's good and there's no reason to to do that and you like it and you want it to go forward, you can give them the waivers.
I like that as well.
But Jeff, uh, I I like it too. A- a- and obviously it must be permissible, this language, under Massachusetts law?
I've I've stuck it in many bylaws and and it 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 all comes back from the attorney general approved. And 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 it really kind of saves you from um.
Oh, I get it.
It 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 allows you not to um not be unreasonable and and avoid challenges to denial. Because, you know, you you can, you can use that tool, you can bend a little bit.
The reason that we've had so many issues with the existing CEE is that every time a proposal came in. It didn't comply with the bylaws and so they would have to go to town meeting and get two-thirds vote and get it amended. And then go back and work with the developers. So I think if it's. Reasonable to do it the way your suggest, your suggestion indicates, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, I have good model language for that, so I will, I will stick it in there. Let's see. Here, there's a. There's another one I wanted to ask you about. In your existing. CEE by law, there's a two-hundred-foot setback from the principal building. So. The DeSisto certainly wouldn't meet that because. It looks like the other development is is nudged right up to the sides and back of that building. So. I mean, that's the kind of thing that that you you would, you would definitely want to be in a position to waive that. Um, if if there was a good proposal that where the new. The new buildings blended very well with the existing cottage and looked kind of like an extension of that cottage. Um, you know, what would be the reason to have a two-hundred-foot gap in between them? Um, maybe no good reason.
Randall, which, when he did his slideshow, showed examples of a farmhouse-looking building that. Was the kind of farmhouse you saw back at the turn of the century with the extension to the barn and then a barn-type building. And it clearly looked attractive and here again, you're not. Causing as much environmental damage because there are already all of the. Infrastructure needs at the original building. So I think when we can encourage that without. A problem, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's a big house, little house, back house, barn. And.
Yes.
Uh, my house is just like that. So. Let let me just look for other questions here.
Oh, the Historic Society, the historic group would weigh in on that one.
Yep.
But they have in the past allowed extensions of buildings that fall within their criteria, so. I think they could be reasonable.
Okay, so the the last question I I I have for you, I have some pretty good direction here and um. Last question is, the properties that are eligible for this. Um. Let me get you back on screen. Full screen, there we go. The properties that are eligible for this. Either need to be on a list. And. I'm I'm thinking that list should probably be incorporated into your zoning bylaw some way. The other thought we discussed last week is that they would be um. There would be criteria for these types of of properties. And the applicant would first go to the historic commission and get a letter from them saying that, yes, this is a legitimate cottage era estate. Um, that can come in under the bylaw and then the planning board would get the the letter and make its determination. And then this bylaw would come down and land on that property. And that in, that in Massachusetts may be construed as a floating zone. And I've researched floating zones a little bit in the last few days. Um, in Massachusetts, you're supposed to show all the zones on your zoning map. You know, um, to have a a zone that's just up in the air somewhere and can alight on a specific property. Um, may run afoul of the prohibition on floating zones in Massachusetts. If you had a list, and especially if that list was was then. Identified as different parcels on your zoning map, you'd be safe. It would not be a floating zone. It would be identified. So. It's very clear where the bylaw applies. It applies to this, these fifteen properties. Now. Joel's bylaw refers to a list and yet I I don't think there is a list. There is there. Anybody have it?
Uh, no, such a list does not exist. I think we did want to. Uh, involve the Historic Preservation Commission in developing that list, as I recall.
Okay. Y- y- your existing cottage era has a definition of cottage era, which says um. Something built roughly between eighteen seventy and 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 nineteen twenty. Um, that's on at least eighty acres. So. That's all the guidance you have. So conceivably, that could be, that could be any house that was built in that fifty years that happens to be on a big piece of land. Uh, maybe not exactly what you have in mind.
Yeah. I'm not sure about that.
Yeah.
Could we? Amend our zoning ordinance to say properties over sixty acres or forty acres or whatever the amount of land is. And put a um somehow call this NPC or whatever we're going to call it. Zone and put a yes on properties. For that zone. And then if they qualified through the historic, you know, preservation. And we might have to have a footnote. Would that work? I haven't thought through that at all. It just came into my mind, so I have no idea if that's possible. Do you, did I make it at all clear? What I'm trying to say. Use table under what the uses are and. When it gets to this bylaw, we would have a line that would allow it in certain. Districts. I guess that would be districts, though not acreage. But maybe we could do something with that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Did we ever get a list from the Historical Commission about what houses are on the list?
I don't think we decided what the criteria was to give them the request.
Oh, I thought it was up to nineteen twenty. Through there.
Have a list?
I thought we had a list somewhere.
I thought Anita was going to get one or give one to Joel or something. I don't know.
Would that be a planned development district, except like Christine said, it wouldn't be a district, it'd be a set of properties?
Yeah, I'm I'm, I I I need to, I need to confab with my lawyer friends. On this to parse out what we could do short of a list that that. A a a list that was actually attached or shown on your zoning map. How how we could do it with sort of criteria like that. Not creating a new zone. It's 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 creating an area where a a part of the zoning would be applicable. Yeah, so, you know, you might be able to finesse it like that, saying, we're not creating a new zone. It's still the R four zone, still the R two zone. But it's just that. This particular aspect of the bylaw. Can be used if these criteria are met. We're not creating any new zoning that has to be shown on a map. That would be my preference. Because then you don't have to go through this process now of. Of i- identifying the 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 properties, but because as soon as you start identifying properties, like you you say, oh, DeSisto. Then everybody who lives near DeSisto gets excited. And then you say another one and everybody over there gets excited and and. Pretty soon you have all these camps of of people that are that are really worried. Um, if 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 you left it. More open and um, you know, and that the historic commission would have to review it and the planning board would have to review it. At least that would give. That would give people around the, an opportunity to to say, no, this property doesn't qualify. We don't think you should do that or. Gives the public some some um input into the process. That would probably be um less threatening. That'll lift. All right, so. Shall I go away and um?
There may be questions for you, Jeff, from the audience. I don't know, they've been pretty quiet.
Yep.
Before you leave.
I I I think I saw some chat things come up here.
Yes, what is the goal of such increases in density that you propose, whether it's single-family houses, contact. Condos, a hotel, or all of that combined? So the goal for increases in density.
Um, okay, um, with respect to NHRPZ. There, the way it's written right now. there, the way it's written right now, that there is not an increase in overall density. It's actually a decrease. For the DeSisto 320-acre property, roughly 54 units now, 38 as we calculate with the NHRPZ. So that's, that's a reduced overall density, but smaller lots. So it's kind of low-density, small lot.
And remember, I don't mean to interrupt Jeff, but this is on the assumption that DeSisto is purely residential. There's no hotel, there are no condos or other amenities. It's, it's just purely residential, which of course was not the original plan of the developer.
Right. So in that case, there would be, there would be reduced overall density, but on smaller lots with, with a 76% preserved as open space. In the case of a cottage era type project, we don't really know how the density is going to go yet, but probably, probably in the area of development, like the DeSisto project, there's going to be increased density right in that area. You know, whether, you know, these townhomes and condos are certainly much more dense than houses on two to four-acre lots. But you do that because that makes the project work. It keeps it concentrated. It gives you enough units to make enough money to make preserving that estate worthwhile. And it keeps it off the rest of the property. So that's why you'd increase density there, just to facilitate that type of project, which has benefits for the town. Is that an okay answer to that question?
Julie?
She's muted.
No, but I was more referring to the planning board saying, that's not enough, you know, we could only have 38. Can't we have more? And I don't know what the goal, I mean, basically, what the goal of any of this increased development is. I mean, right now, there's only a decrepit mansion. So all of this is increased density.
Well, the reason I said that is because I think a developer that's going to look at that property and do what was proposed needs, needs some of that density to make it viable. And I don't think it's all bad to have something happen on the property. If your, if your idea is to totally and completely save every piece of land that's open, then I understand your opposition. But as, as I look at this proposal, it has some real benefits to the town in it.
Well, I know that Sheehan didn't, didn't pay anywhere near as much for his property as did the buyers at Elm Court. So to make a profit isn't the same thing in one property as it is in another.
What does that have to do with anything? What he paid for the property?
Because you're saying you want the project to be economically viable for the developer.
I don't think, Julie, I don't think you can tell from what he paid for it versus what somebody paid for Elm Court, how economically viable one project is versus another. There are too many variables beyond just the purchase price. I think that's overly simplistic to assume because he paid less, he doesn't have to do as much. You know, there are so many other factors, including how much debt he might want to take on, costs of construction at one time versus another. Just, I just don't think...
I won't, I won't belabor this, but I just, I just wish there wasn't so much concern with the welfare of the developer and more concern with the welfare of the townspeople.
Well, I don't feel that way at all. I want to consider that side of it because it's only reasonable to take in consideration, he is a landowner and property owner in Stockbridge and he's asked to do something. I don't think it's unreasonable to look at it from his side of the aisle. And I also, while we're on this, I, we have talked many times about having an engineer or a developer come in and speak to us about what they may think about our proposal and get that viewpoint. I think it would be valuable information. We've talked about it a number of times. And I would really like to have the viewpoint. It's not that I'm not considering the town and, and its best interest, but I certainly think it's reasonable to consider another property's, property owner's point of view.
Okay, well, let's move on.
I see another question that I, that was asked earlier, way earlier, from Mark Mills. What would happen to the main building at DeSisto? Yes. And I guess there's two, there's two answers. If we did not have a CEE bylaw provision that they could take advantage of and it just went residential subdivision under NHR, well, conventional or NHRPZ, the building may or may not remain. If it could be, you know, sold as a residence along with the other 30 or 40 residences that would be built there, then it would be, it would just be another house, the biggest house. If however, it was too decrepit to, to sell or not marketable and was in the way of other development in that portion of the property, it could be demolished. It just depends if it has a market value. If there was a CEE provision in place and the developer took advantage of that, the prime directive would be to preserve and, and protect and perpetuate that, that main building. I mean, that would be the, that would, that plus the open space that's going to be elsewhere, that those would be the town's two big concerns and that, those would have to be met, no matter what, what else happened on that property.
Would the big building be a multifamily building? I mean, it's pretty big. Wouldn't be, be too big for one, one household, I would think.
You know, it, it certainly, it certainly could. You know, especially if the facade was, was left as it is. It could be adapted over. I think the thought here is that, is that it becomes a hotel or something. But it could also be multifamily. Multifamily in a grand style.
Kind of like Orin Oak.
Yeah.
On Prospect Hill, I think.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jeff? So, Jeff, do you have anything else for us?
Well, do, do you folks feel comfortable, comfortable just giving me my head to try to rewrite this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And present it at some time certain in the future to you?
The sooner the better.
Okay.
As a practical matter, Jeff, I, I don't want to, I don't think it'd be fair to say, unless others disagree, that you have this for us by next week. But I think it should, if you can expedite it, that would be great.
Just the cottage era portion?
Yeah, I think, I think we're pretty close with a few open items on the, the main body of the natural resource protections zone bylaw. We've been through it. We've seen a new draft. We'll look at that new draft. But I think the work needs to be done on the cottage era portion of it. And once that's done, Mary, do you have a point?
I just was wondering if we should try to have it at least one meeting at an evening so that the rest of our board can be here? I mean, the four or five of us are sort of the own, you know, we've still got some of the board that can't seem to meet at four o'clock. I mean, should we at least have one meeting that they can get to for their input?
That's a fair point. That's a good idea. Yeah.
No. I mean, I don't know how, I don't know what Jeff's ability to be here at a different time is, but if we've got a couple of members that can never be here at four, we shouldn't put all of our meetings at four.
Yeah. Jeff, could you do a early evening meeting? Any particular day?
Well, next Thursday, I have two others. In the late afternoon, early evening, I'm pretty much booked. I, I could do, I could possibly do Wednesday. It's St. Patrick's Day.
That would put our two, our meetings two nights in a row. I don't think people would want to do that. Some people wouldn't want to do that.
My problem, my problem, I'd suggest the next week, but my problem is I'm gone Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday evenings in the following week. So the 23rd, 24th, 25th, I'm away.
What about Monday, the 22nd?
Yeah.
That could work.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's pencil that in. And it just, you know, operative word is pencil.
So this would be at seven o'clock regularly?
Yeah, we normally meet at 6:30.
That's fine.
I don't know how important this is. I just would hate to get to the very end of it and then have, you know, the rest of our members object.
It's a very good point, Marie. I'm glad you raised it. We might get more public participation at that hour too. Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah. This will be a bylaw, a CEE bylaw. I'm still working with Randall on the first part. So just let us go through our, our machinations together. But this will be the, just the CEE part, section H. And it will, it will be a fairly complete, relatively formatted bylaw, but I'm still going to have notes.
Sure.
With some explanatory notes and some questions. You know, and any text on the little dicey on, I'll highlight in yellow. And I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you by, say, Saturday or something, Saturday the 20th.
Okay. That would be good. That would be excellent.
All right. So it won't be Joel's and it won't be what you've got now. It'll be something new.
I think based on our discussions, you know, the things we went through today, I think that's a good, a good plan.
Okay. Good. And it gives me a little more time too. So that's great.
Okay, good. Are there any other questions of Jeff or any other comments from anybody on this, in this meeting? Hearing none. Let me say thank you, Jeff, to you. Thanks to the public and to my fellow planning board members. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Thanks, Jeff. I make a motion we adjourn.
Second? Is there a second? Maria's seconding. All in favor, raise your hand. Or say aye in the case of those who are blanked out. Christine, I'm assuming you said yes?
Yeah. I guess we'll bring it to the planning board, maybe the education component and asking for a webpage, if that's okay.
You mean on Tuesday? This, this coming regular meeting?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Bye. Thank you, Jeff.
Bye.